Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law notification, and adopt the agenda. If you'd all please stand with me for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first will be staff and student recognitions. WASBO Facilities Manager Certification Program.
Yeah, so we had one of our maintenance individuals, thank you, one of our maintenance individuals complete the facilities manager certification through WASBO. They also cater a lot of their things to buildings and grounds as well. And so they have a pretty big certification program that kind of has certain modules and tests and different things for buildings and grounds individuals to get official certification if they know their stuff. And so Chris Osowski has recently completed this and it's a big deal to kind of go through this program. And so Chris couldn't be here, but he has a written statement that if you don't mind, I'll just kind of read what he had to say. He says, "I regret that I cannot attend your recognition of my completion of WASBO Facilities Manager Certification. I have prior engagements that do not allow me to be here. I want to say just a few things. I want to thank you for the opportunity, you being the board and support you've provided me. I sought out this opportunity while Matt Carson was here. He made a decision to provide me access to this professional learning experience as the first person on our facility staff here at Whitnall. Todd Iverson and Michael Limson continue their support for me in this process as they took on their roles. I've offered my knowledge of the process and support to a few others on our staff as I was finishing my certification and encouraged them to at some point take advantage of the same opportunity. There are now currently three other facility staff members that Whitnall is supporting and providing this professional growth opportunity towards. Having the opportunity to network with other school district facility staff, meeting vendors, offering countless solutions to facility issues, and learning the newest and best practices from facilities directors throughout the state is an eye-opening and wonderful learning experience. He is excited for the other custodians to follow after him."
Chris Osowski.
Yeah, no, Chris Osowski was the lead at the high school. He's still here at the high school. He's now more of a maintenance person for our district in which he's able to kind of do some specialty things across the district. He's still mostly located here at the high school. So he's still a great asset for buildings and grounds at Whitnall in general. So congrats to Chris.
Yeah, congratulations, Chris. Thank you. Thank you for leading that. Onto four, Whitnall High School Student Council Report.
Hello, my name is Amelia Kattakutan. I am our Student Council Secretary. Essentially, my goal is to keep detailed track of our student council goals and happenings at the meetings in order to properly and holistically communicate them, not only with our students and within ourselves, but also to our community members and our administration in order to make sure that things go smoothly. I'm also very looking forward to making sure that communication is more one-on-one, that we're able to create a stronger sense of ties with our fellow Falcons and that we have a good group that we're able to participate in and to increase the amount of spirit that goes on within our school.
Hi, my name is Lauren Bochter. I'll be the acting treasurer for next year. I'm really excited. I really want to focus on investing into the school activities to make them more fun, make them more profitable in the future. And also during the student council meetings, I take a weekly income or I give a weekly report of the budget. I'm at all the ticket sales and I'm really looking forward to making sure everything goes smoothly this year. And also in honor of Sydney, I will be speaking. She's the student council or DECA liaison and she just communicates between DECA and the student senate and she fills in for missing executive board members if one of us aren't able to make it. She's really dedicated and sharp and she's a really hard worker and you'd all see that for yourself, but she's unfortunately not here today. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Anaya Beer. I will be a senior for the 2019-2020 school year and I've been an active member of student council throughout my entirety of high school. Last year I had the opportunity to be secretary for student council exec board and this year I am going to be vice president. So next year I plan on using my leadership skills that I've gained through student council, being on the dance team and being on the athlete leadership committee to create the best possible environment at Whitnall. And I'm looking forward to working with administration and the student body to allow for the most successful year possible.
And hi, my name's Emma Peterson and I will be the student council executive board president. I've been actively involved in student council throughout the past three years of my high school experience and I'm also involved in tennis, NHS, and drama. For next year, my goals are kind of just to work with strengthening student council's relationships within the school and the community in various ways. I want school to collaborate more with other clubs. So student council, I think, is really important that we talk to other clubs just so that we have an understanding between the students of what's going on in the school. I also want to include more community outreach and opportunities for student council to partake in. And next year I will help create these changes and dispute any conflict that may arise and I'm excited for next year and the new changes to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
I think we're all just really excited to be going to student council next year.
Yeah.
Well, good. Well, if there's anything we can do.
I had the honor and pleasure to coach Emma. I turned around and knew she would. At Whitnall youth softball for two years, right?
Yeah.
She was my little Emma. Yep. And it's so wonderful to see you progress and I've seen you in the plays and it's pretty cool. So congratulations.
And you survived his coaching. So.
Hey, hey, hey. Only time you see me in a hat.
I had the privilege of listening to all of the student council speeches live as they recorded it before they sent us to white and they did a phenomenal job. I mean, what you see here is, I mean, I was very, very impressed with their ability to articulate what they plan on doing. And so I'm excited for the, both the increasing communication and a lot of things that they mentioned because I think they're very sincere with that and I think we'll see a lot of things get done next year with this department.
So what need you decide to get involved with?
For me personally, I've just always been like the leader and I just really like being involved with student-driven activities and like I like working with students and stuff. So I just kind of chose this year, I was like, okay, I think I can take the role of president like and I ran and yeah, I'm really excited.
Same for me. I've been in student council since I think like seventh grade, so I've just continued it throughout high school.
And I've been in student council since sixth grade, like missing a year or two in between, I think. But yeah, I was a general member last year and I'm really excited to move forward with a lot of things. We all have a really, we have a lot of really great ideas for next year and I think like us together, we're like a well-oiled machine already and I think we're really excited to get going, so.
What specifically drew me to the position of secretary is that although last year was my first year on council, just because I was a little bit shy coming into activities because I didn't go to the middle school and I always felt a little bit of disparity there. I noticed that a lot of kids felt that same way. They just felt a little bit disconnected from what was going on at our school and like especially between student council and it's our job to make sure that we fairly represent the people that feel like they don't have a voice. And so I feel like being in charge of communication was really important for me just because I've kind of experienced that disconnect. So I feel like it was a proper position and I also really like working with them anyway, so.
That's a great perspective because you're right. It's difficult to see through the people's lenses and what they experience, so you're bringing that perspective. And we're interested to see what kind of ways you come up with to engage the student body and ideas.
Lily did a really nice job. Are there any boys involved?
No.
No?
Sydney? It's all, it's all, it's all girls.
Sydney's a boy.
Executive board, it's all girls.
I just wanted to add in one thing if I can, that this is something like my eighth executive board group of kids, somewhere around there. I've lost track. But even before their school year started, I've noticed that this whole student council thing only works when this works. Because as an advisor, and Mrs. Tasseff would say the same thing, it's not mine, it's theirs. This isn't my school, it's theirs. The amount of just motivation and willingness to change and want to change, more than just the traditional like, oh, I want to change the theme of homecoming or I want to do something different for winter formal, the real concrete change that this group of kids wants to see at Whitnall is really, really cool to see. And I'm super excited for next year.
That's good. Well, thank you for coming tonight. We're looking forward to working with you over the next year.
Thanks for having me.
Enjoy your summer. You're welcome. Take care. Okay. Onto five, action items. A is personal recommendations. Can I take a motion to approve? Second, any questions, comments, discussion?
Sure, there is two of them. Can I see in there, right?
Two.
Two sheets.
It got revised and then the thing was additional.
That's the second one?
Yeah.
Any? Any questions? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Onto B, 2019-2020 Board of Education meeting dates. Let's take a motion to approve. Second? Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to explain, I tried to put in here, I think last meeting when they came forward, there was some suggestions to make some items move and I said that was very challenging to do on the spot because there's a lot of either statutory deadlines or things that we have to get in and approve, whether they're contracts with other organizations and sometimes there's domino effects. So right now the board is in a system in which they have two meetings a month, a workshop meeting in which original action items are discussed, lots of things are, in terms of that piece of it. And then if there is some things that need to be modified, in the meeting two weeks after that modifications come forward to take action. So there is that. Sometimes we're challenged in which those two meetings are back-to-back and so we, December is an example of that just because of the holidays and that. So one of the things that we looked at with the suggestions that you'll see in here, so one of the Mondays was during the school or the spring break week, we agreed that that's poor timing because both staff and everybody, families would not be here. So we did move that because there are five Mondays in March, so we moved that to March 29th. Seems to make sense in terms of that. The other date that was in question in April was the Monday, the April 13th date and because that is the Monday after the Easter holiday, in which we have a four-day weekend. And I, and right now it's, I'm challenged to bring forward a different date other than that. Our staff are back on that Monday, the April 13th. I realize some families may take a four-day weekend to, and may not be back by 6:30 that night to attend the board meeting. However, if we back it up to April 6th, it's the pre-election eve, which means that we can't hold a meeting in here. We would have to hold it in the library. It also puts that meeting back-to-back with March 29th and it's an entirely different agenda. That's really hard for us in less than a week turnaround to pull together an entirely different agenda. We delay it until April 20th. We start out getting into non-renewal timelines and being able to have the 15 days statutory in terms of all of that. So I'm, it's really, you know, the board wants to have conversation around it, but I'm challenged to move it to a different date other than Monday, April 13th, just because of where everything else falls and the timeline and that type with hiring and all of the stuff that happens. But I did move the 22nd or 23rd into Monday, the 29th. And I also shared our July date.
Monday, the 30th.
Is it? Okay, so the 23rd to the 30th. Also in July, we had previously had July 8th, but now that July 4th is a holiday, as will the 5th be because of the extra workdays, it makes more sense to move that to the 15th and 22nd and also work with the dates that our consultants are trying to come and present with us also. So you will see the changes that are listed in there, but I wanted to specifically address the April one because that was one of the dates that was recommended to be changed because it was the end of a four-day weekend. So I can entertain questions or ask in terms of that, but it was, it was hard last time to sort of make that because there are domino effects in terms of timelines and if we move this meeting, we have to look at the meeting before and certain things need amounts of time before you can vote on them or whatever that might be, so.
So is the second meeting April, do you guys have any time to certify the?
Yeah, that one, that will be fine. We do, yeah, so between the two weeks, we need to have at least the number of days that are there. So we'll still have enough, we moved that and we won't have between, is it May 15? I'm trying to remember it. May 15th and that would not be enough if we moved one of those. And so if we held that, because there, people could ask for hearing in terms of the 10 days in terms of between preliminary and final non-renewal and we have to allow enough time to be able to do that. A one-week meeting is only seven days. That does not meet the statutory timeline of having at least 10 days notice to allow for that. So they have to be at least two weeks apart in April, all of those meetings there. So I can't crunch those back-to-back. You could move it to April 6th. I'm going to tell you it's very challenging to go from March 30th to April 6th. Also, we'd have to move the location, which is always challenging for recordings. We know we try to not do that when we don't have to, but we'd have to move it to the library because we're a polling place for spring election for the city.
Okay, and again, as retreats or whatever are scheduled, we'll share that information. As of now, we're planning on having one next week, Monday, at 6:30. So that'll be that for now. Any other questions? Okay. Then I'll take, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Onto six, discussion and future action items. A is textbook adoption, AP Physics.
There we go. Seventh time is the charm. So tonight, just consideration for one last textbook adoption for 2019-20 school year. This is for AP Physics C, which is a new course. It is replacing the AP Physics I. So if you remember way back when we redid the science progressions, we decided to make that switch because AP Physics C is a little bit more in line with some of the higher ed things and some of the coursework that we were steering kids into. So again, like the other AP courses that you approved earlier this spring, it's a little bit more constrained than us really going through a full vetting process of a textbook just because it's AP's list and we have to go through their previously curated lists. So this is the one textbook, it's a standalone textbook, there's no ebook attached to it like some of the others were.
Any questions?
It's AP.
So is this in this year's budget or next year's budget or?
It'll be next year's budget.
So is that why nothing is checked on here about the budget?
Correct, yeah.
Because we'll build a budget based on it versus if it, because we haven't, we're not in that fiscal year yet.
Anybody else?
Questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Onto B, student handbooks. Come on down, you're the next contestant, neat with the Board of Education.
Oh, yeah, they're stuck. Someone's going to have to answer for Bob since he's at the eighth grade for motions.
He had the best one, so.
Yeah, well, there you go, so.
We're all looking a little tired because it's only Monday.
Your first.
Oh, what do you want me to do? Just go over what I did?
Well, I, I wrote that.
Well, how do people, do you want them to go through change by change? It's all laid out. Do you want to just ask questions? What's?
Ask questions.
All right, go for it. The answer was, sorry.
Do you have any questions?
Okay.
I think it's a better way to do it than to go through it all.
So was there anything major that was changed? Or legalities?
An important one, I guess, would be the safety and security of visitors to add the raptor, which was just basically kind of adopting some of the things that Mike had already put out to families and so forth, we're just kind of placing it there.
So you haven't added just ice cream?
It was new for us this year.
There was information there, but it wasn't as specific as it relates to like how our current procedure is, plus we updated policy numbers. I think that's the, those are like the biggest ones. We both took our mission statement out and added the prospectus.
I mean, fortunately, most of the policies, I think almost all of the policies that we had in there were in alignment. Just we just went through and reviewed them all, adjusted some language if necessary. Yeah, just basically got an update. And then just adding a little bit more around the report cards and descriptors, which were new, newer, that weren't in there before. And I think as we work a little bit more along the lines of grading and so forth, I think that would be an area we could be probably expand a little bit.
Thank you for the summary.
It really helped a lot.
And we did the highlights and strikers this year.
Yep, that was great.
Because all the, the first two lunch periods have 10 minutes in between for cleaning, the last one did not. And there was some ambitious custodial input there a year ago that then as the year went on, this year we realized it couldn't happen, especially when we got into winter and just slowing down with clothing and getting ready. So we added the five minutes actually during the school year, somewhere in like January, December, January, as I recall. So I just put it there so it'd be listed.
There's a couple of things I noticed looking through them. One of them, it looked like some formatting got off in the Edgerton one as far as like vaccinations, like things that were superscripted came down and so it kind of didn't make sense with it.
That's going to all get replaced.
That entire immunization will cut to paste in the new one.
Be uniform. Okay, yeah, because it was a lot cleaner in the HC joint one and then.
Lori's better than that.
Well.
Just saying, well, it was also in the middle school one, so. And then just, I liked, there was a statement in the middle school one that kind of referred to the district policy and where to find them. Because when they're in the document and you're on campus, it's really easy to click the link. If parents are at home, I don't know that it's the same thing. So giving them that landing site to go to if they want to find what the policy is because it refers to them.
We can, we can match those.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, so and that was, I saw that in the middle school one as well.
So was every, just clarification, I can go and look, but was each one highlighted to link?
So we had them as links in ours, so that was okay, but at the beginning of the middle school one, it had a, here is where you find the district policy. So it kind of brought you to all of them if you wanted to search for other stuff.
Nice, okay.
And then the grading thing, now the description for the grades that was in the middle school one was really good.
Okay.
Like if you want to cut and paste into the other two, that looked like that.
It's a K8, just, but if it's better, we'll use that.
It, it looked like you guys were close to it, but that one was really detailed and looked really nice for it.
That's the one we sent the families at the report card type.
Yes.
There you go.
Or put the landing site on there, which I like doing.
I like the middle school one in general.
Yep, that is our sheet as well. All right, good. Do we know what we should have? It'll be internals.
Question?
I don't know if any of you have committees that are working on stuff, either through PBIS or whatever the case is that might change any of those? And I guess that's the only thing I would want to ask right now, whether it's grading or PBIS-ish type issues that.
We, I landed it onto a PBIS page. So instead of putting a document in like I had in the past, I linked it to our website page. So if it gets changed, it'll be changed, you know, it should land correctly into that page on the, you know, website. So I'm.
I say that only because in case if you have teacher committees that are working related to that and we want to update it where it references in the handbook, and FYI to the board in terms of that, if it's, if it's a significant enough change, I mean, some of it's just procedural and tiny technical changes, but if it's significant enough, I guess I would want to say that because we do want to honor the work that teachers might be doing to help build some of the procedures around that. And while we get this out for parents to review right now because of registration, there's still some summer work that might happen, I guess I would say.
Yeah, particularly around tier two.
And at the high school level, we have a committee that is looking at some different procedural pieces. They're looking at cell phones, dress code, some of those components, still following within school board policy, but how the teachers have more consistency between classrooms is what they're looking at. So it might modify some of the language we have in here into some of the process and procedure. And then also our, right now we have class rank in there and so depending on later agenda item, how that conversation goes, some of those pieces might change in terms of grading.
I mean, dress code's an interesting one. I, I think if you're doing work around dress code, we should all be like collaborating on that. I would like to hear what, what you're coming up with.
And again, those are procedural, but as compared to policy level, but I just wanted you to have an awareness and we will share that out in terms of how that looks like because it. Yeah, nothing, no.
Was I just looking at you? Is that what?
Well, no, it's true though, because we, we live it. So it makes perfect sense to us. So it's great to have, you know, fresh eyes looking at it, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next to C, employee handbook with Karen and Mike.
No, I'm not going to sit over there, Karen. Sit on her island.
Likes to leave me on that.
So not as many, last year we recall, which you may not, a pretty major overhaul format-wise to the employee handbook, changing it up, breaking it out into different appendices. So this year made it a lot easier for Karen to work within, there's different sections that were created. You see on the, on the front page, just a summary of what we consider to be the major changes to the handbook underneath the summary of changes. And just to highlight even a few additional ones, number three, there is some for all employee expectations, some communication, different expectations that revolve around your position, you know, really basic things like, hey, make sure you check your email on a consistent basis and items like that. Some board action that we took earlier in the year, yet have now implemented into the new handbook. Number five, with school closure reporting requirements, we got a huge test this year, I would say, as far as what January and February looked like for the amount of snow days and cold days. That made us look at that language and kind of rewrite some of those expectations because it got pretty fuzzy when you start missing like four days and you're like, well, what does this mean contractually on those items? You know, and finally, we added some co-curricular things in there as well that is going to be updated in July when the co-curricular handbook for employees comes out through Dave as well. So we'll kind of align those languages that specifically go to coaches, but then for our own employees as well, that we cover specifically employees and so on to that. The two then bolded things are some things that, the definition of full-time equivalency and Karen, please jump in any time. We wanted to clarify what a full FTE was at each of the schools, so that there was some clarity that really has been missing for quite a while. And this allows us now to not only be clear on what a full-time expectation is and equity across, you know, schools, especially high school and middle school and the two elementaries, but it also allows us to accurately determine if someone's not working a full FTE, how do we calculate what that looks like on a consistent basis? And so this language now kind of cemented into the handbook gives us some really good guidance to move forward. And if you recall, final thing before Karen takes over and you can ask her all the questions around. Last year we had a discussion that we're aligning paraprofessionals, they work the same amount of days as educators and they were getting five holidays, whereas educators were getting three. And so we said, let's start to step that down and so that language is now in this handbook and it will be four the upcoming year and three next year to be aligned with educators. So that stepped on the process to that benefit. Are there questions or comments that you have? And if not, of course, this will come back on the 24th for action.
And just one thing, the mission and beliefs were taken out and the prospectus was added instead.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Sort of the principles too, and we know this is a lot of tedious work, and it's time consuming, especially with everything else going on. But thank you for taking the time to do it, making sure that everything's current and up to speed.
Karen's detail in all this is, I would flounder, that's for sure. So, Karen does an amazing job of laying it out and bringing up different, different perspectives of what needs to be covered, so.
Great.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Hey, welcome.
Have a great night, thanks. Okay, next is co-curricular code with Dave, that's a lot of Cs.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
So, I'm bringing forward for consideration a new or updated code. Our current code has not been updated for a number of years. And with the recent expansion of duties from both the high school now to the middle school, I felt it was very important to align the middle school and the high school, as well as to incorporate our extracurricular activities from the activity side, from theater to band and stuff, cause there was a lot that was missing from the current code. So, some of the major things, obviously, going through this, there's, there is a lot of red and changes. And I want to thank Karen, who is very good with all of the formatting, because my formatting was not ideal. But she is a whiz at that, so I appreciate the efforts there, as well as the, the team that came together to help me with this, a number of coaches and teachers and administrators and so forth. But most of this, in the very beginning, is just adding the middle school and activities aspects to it. Some of the major components are closer towards the end, where we have an actual, a new policy, I don't want to say policy, a new addition, where we include a different kind of consequence tier graph, where we include minors, which are kind of documented, written offenses against the student, and then different tiers for the violations. One of the other major ones that we went in and looked at was having academic eligibility and removing the GPA aspect. Prior to this, we had a policy where it was if you had a lower than a two point oh or two failing grades, you'd become ineligible for athletics and co-curriculars. And to align with what the WIAA has to remove that two point oh and go to just two failing grades. Tried to clarify some of the consequences, and there's a very long list, and this list is taken right from the teacher's handbook as well, to, to make this align with that. So, basically, just a completion of updating and integrating both the middle school and high school to come together and athletics and activities.
Any, any questions?
So, in your opinion, that will change about the grade point and the two failing grades, does that make it easier for a person to participate?
In my opinion, yes. However, I think it does give kids an opportunity that might not be very into the academics side, but are still getting passing grades to participate. For example, if a student is receiving D pluses and is trying really, really hard, or they have a couple of Bs, but they have a couple of lower grades and other things. If, if they have a goal to work towards, may, might be in athletic or in activities, that they could continue to work harder. If, if a student says, hey, I just can't, you know, I can't get above a two point oh, cause I can't take tests well, or I'm just, I'm not an academic kind of kid, then I'm just not gonna try anything. And I'm not gonna try to go out for things where they might find something that they can work towards, so.
So, what is failing?
In my, my grade point, it would be whatever the failing grade is from that actual staff member, so.
I know, but what is, what is failing? F?
Well, it's F.
F?
Yeah, anything lower than, yeah. D minus is not, F is not.
So, by two failing grades, you mean two classes that they have a failing average?
Two classes that they have an actual, yes.
So, it's actually something they could bring up before the end of the term, whereas your GPA, you can't bring up until the term ends and all the grades are...
And that's part of the logic, if you have a student who's had a terrible freshman year, but currently does, I mean, that, that's sort of that problem. So, I think the question about, is it easier, I'm not so sure it's easier, but it does reward kids who had a bad start at something. Cause you currently can't be failing anything.
It's lenient, maybe that's...
Yeah, I mean, giving them out like, cause there's some students, if they feel like I had a bad start at something, there's no way I can ever recover from it, so I'm not gonna try, so it's not a lot, I mean, it's hard to mathematically sometimes do that. But they'd have to be passing all classes regardless. The thing I really want to point out to the board is, our middle school has not had a code though. And like, more than anything else, like, understand the impact of now having a middle school co-curricular code, right? We've not had anything. Nothing. So, the bigger impact on this might be some of the offenses with the high school and some of the language there. The real thing is the impact on, if there is, in terms of impact. So, I don't know, Dave, in terms of, remember, they don't, so I didn't, I didn't take, I didn't see the difference, because they don't do Fs over there. So, did you use basic, or what did you use for the language?
The language at the time was two Fs or failing grades.
So, that doesn't exist at the middle school, what's the comparable?
That would have to be adjusted.
Okay, that's why I want to be clear, because we've, the middle school has, doesn't have A, B, C, D, F. So, F is a non-existent thing at the middle school, so if we're talking, help me with my letters again, what's the lowest letter? B, basic, right? Beginning, sorry, yeah, there you go. So, if it's beginning, so we're gonna, beginning, I just want to be clear, because we've not had any academic or behavioral correlation to participating in co-curriculars at our middle school.
And currently, our middle school is not considered a WIAA middle school. So, that does not, we can set up, however academically eligible that we choose as a district.
Kind of like, cause you brought up middle school, does, like, the school field trips count as a co-curricular? Like the trip to DC or New York kind of thing?
Can you list the co-cur, there's not a lot of clubs, the middle school, can you list what their items at student council?
Robotics.
Did it run math club through?
No, it was just, it was just robotics, student council, woodworking class, or woodworking shop.
So, those are all the clubs that would, and then it's just the athletics, or any new clubs that would get added, but...
And then there's like the drama thing.
Drama would be in that for every other year. I know Mr. Antheline wants to add a chess club, that would be included into it as well.
So, you just have to come up with that definition?
Right, I just want to be clear on it in terms of that and communicating to parents, because we've never had, like, behavior has not been a part of whether you can or can't. Where at the high school, it always has been. I'm just, I, I want to, I just want to be very, very open with this.
So, okay, so you're gonna be open here, so are you gonna be open, when does it start?
That is between Bob and Dave to communicate it to parents, because this is a significant, I don't, if I haven't said it before, I think it's a significant change. Needed, I'm not disagreeing with it, but it hasn't been something that people have paid attention to. Could it help in terms of behaviors of the middle school if that was something? Maybe, maybe not, I don't know. It's just, this middle school has never had a correlation between those.
I think starting with it at the beginning of the year would be the place to do that.
Oh, absolutely, that's why we're doing it now. But I think over the summer, it needs to be communicated. And part of it, Dave's, you know, I've, you know, part of Dave's work has been to try to understand that there is a stronger correlation between middle and high school. We did not have a lot of communication, conversations that were happening, even though we're 500 feet away from each other. So, in terms of what that means for expectations and all of those type programming, coaches talking to each other. So, this is part of the process, but it's still, as we're trying to align our middle and high school student expectations, you know, there's, there's, there's just that piece of it, so.
So, this is your first year as being at the high school and middle school together. How is it, from the beginning of the year till now, how, what have you seen different or progression or?
Well, trying to align both the high school and middle school. There's been a lot of, we've never done this before, there's a lot of confusion. And I believe the guidance from a variety of different aspects, from either registration to how we present ourselves as a team, to now potentially this new code, is going to help the, the parents and the families and the students understand what to expect when they move forward. So, I feel it's, it's been a great thing, I think it's needed. It'll help the students have better expectations of, well, what's going forward. So, I, I think it's been a really good experience, and I think it'll only get better.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Onto seven, reports, A is micro credentials with Lynn, Mike, and Amy.
Big time, yeah.
You're with us in spirit.
Still with us.
Oh, um, I'll put, I'll do it, or I... So, we wanted to just provide an update on where we are with the micro credential system as our form of compensation. You'll recall that we developed the system, started developing it two years ago, started getting the initial stages together, and we now just, two and a half years ago, and we are now just completing our second year of running micro credentials. So, from where we've started to where we've come, even in just two years, there's been a few different iterations and a few things that have been tweaked and changed and modified along the way. So, we'd like to just bring you up to speed on where we are in all of that. So, if you recall, we, we set out on this quest to really figure out a compensation model. And that compensation model, we really wanted to honor the professional development and learning that teachers engage in as professionals, and talk, you know, and think about how do we really say, you know, we're expecting you to engage in this professional learning on an ongoing basis? And then, how do we reflect that, you know, you've done the professional learning and you've grown as an individual? And had run into another district that was having success with this model, and so we looked into it and decided to develop it as our own. We really just wanted to think about how do we then develop this and get it into sort of a format and a structure that's going to be sustainable? How is it going to personalize needs of teachers? Because different teachers have widely varying needs as far as their own professional development. I think we all agreed that the old days of having 200 teachers sit in a room and give them all the same lesson is not the way of the world anymore, as it's not the way of the world with our own students. And we wanted to make sure that whatever we did was going to be something that's sustainable over time. So, we developed our courses, course catalog. It was very skinny at first, we had kind of a few well-chosen selections, but there was not a wide variety at that time. We also offered our teachers a baseline, we called it a baseline opportunity, and in your packet it said tail with a small a, and it was teaching and learning essentials. So, we had established all these topics and priority areas and said, you know, here are like the buckets or the categories that you can look into. And so, like, one is like assessing and reporting, and one is, you know, social emotional learning, one is instructional strategies. So, within those, if teachers didn't feel like they were confident or up to speed on those categories themselves, we had did a one and done kind of micro credential saying, you can take this one micro credential, it gives you a solid foundation and understanding, fundamental understanding of all of that, then you're better equipped to start the micro credential process. So, we did have a chunk of teachers take that, that course, just to kind of get their feet under them and theoretically set them up for better micro credential choices in the future. We had to identify who would be our collaborators and instructors, and some courses are self-guided, self-paced, and you just need to check in with somebody and collaborate with someone along the way. Some were actual face-to-face courses, just depending on, on the choice. We had to create a menu of variety of choices, so we tried to, you know, hit the, you know, a special ed teacher might need something very, very different than a high school math teacher, so we had to attend to needs. And then, we had to establish just structural things like timelines and guidelines, and when will people submit? And when will they apply for these? And if they are applying and submitting, who's looking at all these applications and submissions? So, we've gone through all of that, this stuff over. Mostly that first year is what we had to go into the gates, out of the gates with. So, now, at the end of year two, we've, we've really kind of done a bunch of different things. We've really looked at teacher feedback, we've looked at feedback of this verification committee, which consists entirely of teachers. So, we have teachers really doing peer review work, so it's not administrators sitting at the table. I think it's much more powerful when peers are having those discussions. And we've had to look at all kinds of things, we've had to look at our forms, we've had to look at the clarity of the, of the process. You know, we've had people say, okay, we didn't understand what you meant, so we have to say, okay, then we need to look at that. So, all of those things have been a big, big, ongoing, ongoing process. So, we're just gonna do some specifics for you.
Yeah, so just in terms of growing our offerings, we started out with that first initial, very small catalog, but very pointed to... It's, it is on.
Okay.
A very small catalog, but very pointed to the goals and the six buckets. And we've been able to add a lot of additional opportunities for teachers based on teacher feedback and just different initiatives that we've been moving forward with in the district. Our Institute for Personalized Learning at CISA One has created their own set of micro credentials that continues to grow, that it's very nice that we can tap into those, so that's one way we've added some. There's also an online format called Digital Promise, that has educational micro credentials that we can tap into those. And teachers can go and look at those and find ones that they like, and then propose that they do those. We have had some build your owns, where teachers take what they really want to work on, and then they propose that to the verification committee as something they could do as micro credential work, so it's very individualized. And what we've seen happen is that other teachers see what they have done, and they say, hey, now I want to do that. So, we've been able to take some teacher-created micro credentials and then put them into the catalog, because they've been so successful for other teachers to do. And just recently, we've started having the buildings try some building-specific micro credentials, where the principal identifies a need of a specific team or group in the building, and they work together on a micro credential. And then, we also have the brand-new, first-of-its-kind stacked micro credential, which is multiple micro credentials that lead to a credential, if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, so we're starting, starting this summer, we have offered teachers the opportunity to engage in what we're calling the Teacher Leadership Academy. And the Teacher Leadership Academy is really designed to build leadership capacity and skills in teachers. Kind of an old model of teaching and learning has been, you know, teachers teach in the classrooms and then just wait for administration to tell them what to do with other things. And we're trying to get more of an organic growth of like, we're all professionals, we all really need to have these great discussions. And as a district, we've not really given teachers a lot of really overt opportunity to grow as leaders, per se. So, the Teacher Leadership Academy is a collection of, there's an introductory course this summer that asks teachers to just do some reflection work and some investigation on leadership styles and some light reading. And then, it gets into four pretty intense courses through the course of next, throughout the duration of next year. And each course has a theme, each course is about two months long. And then, at the end of that, they can engage in what would be a capstone project, where they kind of take all the learning that they have been spiraling through and decide, what does this look like in my role? How will I use these leadership skills and use the things I've been learning in my teams and in my building or in my department? So, we're looking at it as being a pretty intense experience. We have a lot of interest, we have, had over forty teachers sign up for it at this point, so we'll, we'll see. So, we're, now we're on hot seat to really make that a good, deep, meaningful experience for them and benefit the organization as well. So, we're not done. Oh, sorry, I thought you were gonna...
Oh, so the verification committee is the group of teachers that look at the micro credentials and sort of run the process of applications and verifications and approvals and all of the pieces. And it has undergone a lot of growth this year. The team that came together this year, so some people from the first year felt that it maybe wasn't what they thought it was going to be. it maybe wasn't what they thought it was going to be and they left and some new teachers came on board. We currently have four elementary teachers, two from each elementary building, three middle school teachers and three high school teachers. So we ended up with a very nice balance and all buildings represented. And just, it's been a really great group to work with. They, they have come together very well, they all work together very well and they have infused a lot more of teacher feedback into it, where they just started out checking boxes and making sure that teachers had checked all of the boxes for their micro credentials. Now they're starting to talk about the why of things. You know, why are we offering these micro credentials? Why are we asking these questions on the application? Why are we looking at this particular piece in the verification process? And that has brought a lot of new growth and vision to the process and it's just really, it's really nice to see the teachers being more and more involved in the process.
And one of the tricks.
Oh, the, yeah. Well, we've, we've improved in terms of protecting the teachers, in terms of, we, we keep all of the micro credentials in a Google folder, in a Google folder system. And originally, the first year, there was some concern about teachers being able to look at who, who was doing what and who was applying for what and the teachers were concerned about their privacy of what they were submitting. And so we were able to work with Todd Stacey to kind of improve some of the security of the Google folders and the Google documents.
One of the tricky pieces of the verification committee is when you get that many teachers in a room looking at materials and trying to verify things, the calibration process is what's been, you know, just making sure that we're going to look at a piece of work together, we're going to kind of go through it together. You know, how would you say this is quality or what would you say it's lacking? And just getting everyone on the same page was at first the big challenge last year, but I think the team has really come together well with that, too. There's numbers here.
Yeah, so, yep, here we go. As the inputter of numbers, there are things that pop out at me every time that I take a look at a new submission time period and take a look at what is currently happening and what the future looks like for the model. And so first of all, what we wanted to touch upon and what Lynn already did touch upon is that the micro credential is a personalized model for our, for our educators. And so what initially popped out to me as I input these new micro credentials that educators are submitting in dollar amounts is the fact that the create-your-own micro credential is, is increasing rapidly as far as its use. As you would expect the first time around, people are taking these canned micro credentials that the district has created because what is this thing? How do we even go about doing it? What, what does this mean? And now it's typically if you have taken a micro credential, even if it's you as one or two, you are kind of progressing into a, I want to create my own now and I'm going to kind of take my professional growth for myself. And so we've seen that number, the, the number you see on the very right for September 2019, that's the amount of micro credentials that were, create-your-own number. So you can just see that growth. Amy, you want to touch upon your build-your-own, the guide there before I move on to the other numbers?
Oh, wait. So part of the, part of the documents that we revised, and we've revised this several times, I think this is probably the fourth incarnation, to help teachers understand the components of a build-your-own. And we've revised and revised and revised to try and, and there's still another revision we're planning for next year of this, this first category. But it kind of lays out for teachers how to put a micro credential together. Are you having any instruction, outside instruction, like a facilitator or someone from the district is facilitating some instruction? What kind of independent study are you doing? Are you, are you reading books? Are you looking at articles or webinars? What kind of reflections are you doing? We really encourage the videotaped reflection for the micro credentials because the studies show that you really learn the most when you watch yourself instructing, because when you are instructing, you only see 20% of what's going on. And so when you videotape, you see the whole room and everything that's going on. And we hear, we, we are seeing some really well-done reflections by teachers when they videotape themselves and then watch that. Feedback from outside sources, trying to keep those feedback cycles going with coaches, creating items for implementation in the classroom is one piece. And then finally, we're trying to encourage getting student feedback as well. Getting data from the students before they implement something new that they've learned and then again after they've implemented something that they've learned. So this particular incarnation has really helped teachers build that. The first few incarnations, they, they just weren't clear enough and so it was a struggle. But we continue to develop this.
So I don't know if you can see that, but there are dollar amounts that attach to each of these different criteria. So not only does the teacher, the educator, understand what they're creating and the amount that they can expect to get from that micro credential, but it also gives some insight into when we do district-created micro credentials, what we're thinking about and why certain dollar amounts are attached to it. And if it is a certain dollar amount, really, just from a dollar amount alone, educators can determine, well, what is this going to, what is this going to entail when I do take it? So, so that's been an important step. The, the two graphs, if you just go back to the slide, the two graphs on the right simply showcase the growth in micro credential dollars from submission period to submission period. So I lined up the Marches, which is when we give out our first increases, and then I've lined up on the bottom graph the Septembers just to keep it even. So what you can see in that top graph on the right is that there is a tremendous amount of growth in what we have for educators submitted for micro credentials for this upcoming 1920 school year and what they plan to submit in January for payout in March of, of 2020. So that's a dollar amount that goes into my budget, into Whitman's budget for, for the 1920 school year. And then part of this model is we're already able to gauge then what 2021 looks like. So that's the bottom right in which we're able to say, okay, the other half of the January micro credentials get paid out in 2021. We also have some people who are submitting in May of 2020, that'll be paid out in September of 2020, September 2020 for the 2021 school year. In other words, we're looking two school years out, which is nice from a budgeting standpoint to understand the total payouts. And obviously, these are projections as far as what people have submitted for and as long as they complete that work, these will be the payouts that they receive for, for the upcoming school years.
So we got into a lot of feedback, like we're trying to encourage system-wide, is really, we shouldn't be blindly doing anything without collecting a lot of feedback along the way. So we have gone a bunch of different avenues, anything from just anecdotal things to discussion to people just asking informal questions, all the way to the Concerns-Based Adoption Model Survey and sending out Google Forms and the Verification Committee is very valuable because not only are they doing the verifying, but they're also every day talking to teachers who are asking them questions about the micro credentials. So that's a great kind of source of two-way communication there. Do you want to talk more about the survey again?
I would say it'll be interesting to, to do the Concerns-Based Adoption Model Survey again this fall, it was done last fall. If we do it this fall with now many more educators who have partaken in it, just another year of experience to understand what the micro credentials are, I think we'll see a higher base, I think we'll see higher concerns with the teacher community, educator community as a whole, because we've already seen educators, especially at the elementary schools, who are creating micro credentials that bring in a, a large group of people into one, one micro credential. I'm, I'm going to create this micro credential, why don't you all do this with me? And, and that's kind of that, that piece of the, the concern-based adoption model that was missing last fall, as far as this concern about bringing other educators along with me, that I think we would see an increase in that concern moving forward, but only the model will tell us that when we, when we have our educators take it again. Still me. Hey, it's still me. So to, to synthesize some of the information that, that we're looking at right now when we talk about what are the overall increases that our educators are, are receiving. So just some interesting, okay, they're interesting to me. Ninety-seven total educators have taken at least one micro credential. There are roughly 143 that are eligible, so almost 70% of our staff have taken at least one micro credential. The most being 12. Wow, give that person a round of applause.
Been one year?
No, since, this is since the beginning.
Since two and a half years.
Two years, two years. March, March 2018 was our first submission period, so really. The model appears to be acting like we would expect it to act. What I mean by that is, and these are numbers pulling out some teachers who have, who have resigned or who are, for different reasons or made a salaried hourly move. Market demand increases if we gave those educators their holdout of these numbers. But the amount of number educators for 1920 right now who are taking zero micro credentials, there's 44 of them. Their average increase is the proposal that has been brought forward and their average increase would be 1.05%. Initial educators, there's 26 in that realm and you can, you can read the statistics up there. If you've taken one micro credential for the 1920 school year, you're about at a 1.5% increase. But the overwhelming largest amount are those who have applied for two or more micro credentials. So if you are taking, planning on taking two or more micro credentials and along with what the proposed or the estimated universal level increase would be, those educators on average are going to be receiving a $1,900 increase and about a 3.4% increase in their pay on average. So you're taking just the lowest salaries, the highest salaries who have taken micro credentials and that's the average increase that educators are seeing. And so if you were to say at the beginning of the model, is this how you want it to act? Were those who are not participating at all versus those who are participating the most, you probably couldn't draw it up much better than what the numbers are saying, how the model is acting. The little graph on the left I like, those are just the teachers who have completed at least one micro credential since the start. And it just breaks out how much of their increase is that of UAI versus that of micro credentials. So the orange is the UAI amount, the blue is the micro credential amount, and that is quickly becoming closer and closer to 50/50. I would expect once we get our October submissions in, because I think there'll be another large amount of teachers coming back, maybe over the summer, who are, you know, I gotta either jump in or I've got another idea, you could see that swing closer to 50/50. That's for those who have taken micro credentials. All right.
So, you know, the, the takeaway is that we really want people to be thinking of big picture is that the model is, you know, it's, it's a compensation model, but we don't want it to be solely about the compensation. We want it to be about the continued development and the continuous and continual improvement that we want everyone to experience in, in a school district. So we talk about it with students all the time, now we're starting to talk about it as, we're all learners in the system, so how do we support that growth and how do we keep it going and keep it moving? It supports our district goals, so we really try and craft the, the emphasis of certain micro credentials and really the whole bank of micro credentials are designed to really shore up what we're expecting to see from teachers and what we want to see and what we're looking for in the future. So I think we're doing a good job of identifying, you know, where are we now and where do we want to be and then looking what kinds of growth opportunities we can provide through this system.
Can I just give a quick example of that? For example, we, one of the ones we started out with was unpacking standards. It was one of the first micro credentials we offered. And over the last two years, as staff have taken that and a lot of staff have taken that one, it's helped support them creating their learning targets and the curriculum document for the district. And now we've removed that one because we feel that educators have gotten to a point where that support is no longer needed. So it can really go with the ebb and the flow of the goals for the district. Oh, and then just to say as well, it also really matches the new needs. For example, we know social emotional learning is a newer need and this, this round, is Jackie back there? Jackie helped to support the creation of, I believe, five new micro credentials in the social emotional learning area and they were extremely popular with teachers in this application cycle. So as new things come up, we can add to the course that helps support teachers in the district goals.
Same thing with, with building-level initiatives, same type of thing, whether it's a build-your-own micro credential or it's one that we've predetermined would support the, the district's growth and the district's mission, vision and all that kind of stuff. Building-level initiatives, principals are getting really good at pinpointing, you know, here are pockets of people that really could use this and doing that. And then the, the most powerful thing, I think, is that it's not just the old model of you go off to a university by yourself and you take a class and you come back and use it maybe in your own classroom and nobody else gets to benefit from it. The big power here is that it is building collegial conversations and experiences and some shared professional growth experiences. So the Teacher Leadership Academy is our big thing coming up now, where we've got, you know, this series of micro credentials leading to a leadership credential and then we'll have some expectations around if you've completed that whole series plus the capstone project, you know, what does that mean for you as a teacher leader in our district? So we're hoping that we can then call on those teachers to help us with some professional development, with some peer professional development. We are going to have some processes in place where if you haven't engaged in some district professional or building-level professional development or in teaching and learning type things, then, you know, provide us some evidence as to how you are continuing to use this, almost like a, almost like having to redo your license every six years as a teacher. We want people to stay current with the learning that they get out of that Teacher, Teacher Leadership Academy. We have a reboot scheduled for August launch, which was really the idea of the Verification Committee. They said that, you know, we, we really want to make sure that every, everyone understands what this is about. Some people have misconceptions about micro credentials, some people are still afraid of them. So the Verification Committee, this group of teachers, has said, we would like to do a presentation to the district now just to make sure that we're all on board. I don't know if you have anything to add to that or?
Nope. They're just, they just want to make sure that everybody understands and knows about the changes that have been made as well.
And we continue to look at the compensation of the Verification Committee as well as these amounts of micro credentials increase and the amount of work that they have to do to accept the submission and then verify once all the work is done, continue to kind of play with what that dollar amount is again, what those 10 individuals get as well. In fact, we've increased it this year a little bit to just match the amount of flow that they got this year, especially this spring. Just want to fill that out there.
And then the last thing is that, you know, the Personalized Learning Institute out of CISA One has come up with some really good-looking micro credentials that go through Digital Promise. So we are going to get those incorporated into our catalog as well. So that is a good, good springboard for more of the personalizing learning now that we've got some other foundational pieces set.
Do we see any trends as like more elementary teachers or?
We do.
Yeah, it's, it's, right now it's more elementary.
It is.
From a, from a percentage of, of staff, or a percentage of the staff you expect a high school to be because they have a full staff, but it's clearly the elementary right now that are ahead of the curve as far as what they're participating in, as you heard Amy alluded to, elementary is creating micro credentials specific to their buildings, which is getting a lot of buy-in as far as massive groups of educators getting together and saying, yes, we'll all take this micro credential. And that's really been the, if there's groups of individuals who are, who are doing, if there's groups of individuals, if there's groups of educators who are doing a particular micro credential, their success of actually completing that is a lot higher than somebody just going out on their own and going, I think I'm going to try that or try that, I'm going to create this. There's no really buddy system there to get them to, to complete it. We're seeing the groups are where the most success is coming in.
And a person can just walk out at any time they want?
Yeah, it's, it's really a no harm, no foul thing. We don't want people to just take a pile, pile of things and say, oh, I'm taking it and I'm not taking it. But if they sign up for, like, let's say they sign up for three micro credentials and one falls away, they, they just simply don't get paid for that. We have to be careful budgetarily, Micah said, you know, we can't have people saying we're going to do, you know, I'm going to do this and I'm going to submit it in April for verification, but now I want to submit in January, you know, those kind of timeline things we can't play with. But we are honoring the fact that if people, you know, they, they pick it up, they're like, okay, I, I can't take this one right now, maybe I might have to come back to that at a later time or reapply for that one later. I think at least at this point, it's getting people less afraid to try, knowing that they're not going to get, you know, any percussion necessarily.
I think the data on that will be really interesting coming in this next year because now that we've seen participation go up so much, we'll be able to see how much submissions go up. Is it, is it just participation or are they actually going to follow through? And so we'll, we'll have more data on that after the next submission period.
Yeah, so is there a plan to reach out to the 44 educators who are not taking micro credentials or is that kind of a gear thing that's going on or?
We don't have a plan to reach out to them specifically. I think we're trying to let this kind of be an organic process and let it sort of grow itself. And when you're watching the numbers, you're seeing more and more people starting to dip their toes in and trying to figure it out. And when you're watching the numbers, you're seeing more and more people starting to dip their toes in and trying to figure it out. So we're hoping that, I don't wanna call it peer pressure, but like peer influence of this is working and we're getting some great results out of it will catch on.
And from the very beginning, it has been a, you don't have to. And but it's, there's been also, not only do you start to fall behind maybe in some of the professional growth, but there is the financial component to it as well. And hopefully those two teams come together and say, hey, this isn't going anywhere.
Well, one thing that really promoted a lot of these new ones that came in this application cycle was the elementary schools have presented their micro credentials at staff meetings. And they have their teachers that, you know, stand up and say, here's some new ones that we've created that we think would be really interesting to you and kind of promote them at these both buildings. And that really brought in a lot of interest because they caught the excitement. And so we would like to look into doing that at the secondary level as well to try and kind of increase some of the excitement there in the same sort of way that they do at the elementarys.
That's a good idea. My second question is, do the people, the teachers on the committee, do they participate in the micro credentials? Or is being on the committee kind of their part of it?
They can participate in the micro credentials. That means they have to be careful at verification time, but they're not verifying their own micro credentials.
When they verify, they generally work in teams of three with one in, like an elementary, middle school, high school on each team. And we make sure that if they have submitted them, another team gets there. They're all very good about like, oops, mine's in this pile.
Okay, thank you all. And on to B, class rank update.
So this was, if you remember, this was a future topic for discussion that I think Stephen had shared, wanted to be discussed. And so kind of keeping you updated, this is not a vote or wherever we're at, but just wanted to give you some updates. So we had a roundtable discussion in terms of the conversations, looking at other districts, schools, that different ways that they look at, whether it's not just abandoning entirely GPAs, just how they look at that, how they formulate that, what they do. And so that was a good discussion, that was really supposed to enable roundtable discussions. Last week, we held some focus groups with about seventy-five-ish seniors. And their high school, their teachers facilitated that. That was a phenomenal experience. I love that opportunity. One thing about seniors at this time, so AP exams are done, there's literally no risk to them. There's like, they like, but they are very, they have strong opinions at this point. Because, you know, if you're in the middle of a game, you're not gonna tell anybody to change the rules, that's for sure. But they're almost at the like, hey, you can pass, go type of space, right? They're a week away from graduation and so they're clearly gonna tell you and we're about as honest and blunt as you're gonna get. And that was, that was perfect. So I think it was a learning opportunity for the teachers to hear from the students as much as it was anybody else. And so we got, we had some questions, they were just discussion at their tables. I know that Amy facilitated one of those tables. And so we had a wide array of students, they were not just all AP students, they were a wide range of students. And so not quite half of the senior class, but at least forty, forty-five percent of the senior class in which they were talking. And we really did not want them to leave because they were highly engaged in conversation with each other about different things. So brutally honest with things. So that was great, we've collected that feedback. The alumni survey, I should have closed it yesterday, I didn't. We have eighty-seven responses from that, we used the last four graduating classes to get that out. We've tried to get the word out directly to parents who had students in terms of that, so that's the response rate from there. And need to get out the class rank survey to some of the current students and parents. We also mentioned at the roundtable, and we're in the process of doing a couple of this, so there is research that we've collected, but most importantly, we are calling other school districts because sometimes it's not readily available on websites in terms of what they do. Sometimes it's very detailed, you can see what they do, and other times not so much. So we're calling around to see what they do, what they recognize, what does that look like? It was funny, after the roundtable discussion, I went home and that night in the news, it was like, I think it was Rufus King selects their eleven valedictorians today. And I was like, oh, okay. So there is not a single system, and I think people get so used to like, this is the way that everybody does it. But I think you just need to get out of the, a little bit to decide, like, there are many, many other systems. It's just how any school has always done it and just, you know, realize that it's good to just revisit the way that we do things, whether or not you stay there or decide to make changes. And then also pulling together some data after we finish up this semester. So we'll get GPAs at the end of the semester, do some correlations with the past graduating classes, even our juniors and seniors in terms of class rank, if you will, GPA, what their ACT score was, some other factors too. Did they participate in fine arts classes? What are some of those other factors that may be looked at? So looking at our own students to see, you know, in terms of all of that. So that's where we are in terms of that progress. I think as Charlie mentioned before, if we can gather some of that, I think if we're going to make a change, the challenge with making a change is, you know, you can't make it with this upcoming senior class. You can't probably make it with this upcoming, you know, junior class. You have to allow so many years before it takes change. This year's freshman class had some significant changes happen to them, fewer weighted classes to them. They've had some other pieces that are in there that it could be a possible chance to look at that. We also talked about the inequity, if you remember last year, the one point two five weighted grade scale, only up to a certain, until a C, and then all of a sudden it drops differently. So we've always had that inequity since the nineties. So there are some things that we want to look at correcting in terms of that. And it's a matter of, you can't do it to when you're getting close to your senior year. You've gotta start it at a certain point where in the middle of the game, you don't change the rules. You've gotta give adequate notice that the rules are changing in terms of all of that. So you will probably see this on there each meeting now as we get some more data and share out some of the information, we continue to decide what does it look like? Again, it's not getting rid of the GPA, but to what extent or what other factors? Or how do we recognize students and what do we value as we looked at yesterday's graduation ceremony? What we choose to recognize? That is a district decision, whether, you know, we choose National Art Honor Society. But, you know, there are just, I'm not saying pro or against it, it's just different things that each school has decided to recognize. So it just ventures the conversation with folks, so.
And to that point, Stephen, yesterday you mentioned, what was it, the top fourteen or fifteen students in this class were in valedictorian, salutatorian, and any other?
Pretty much any other year, yeah. Just because this class is. Well, from what I can tell, with what I could see, the GPAs of this class are so tightly centered around it and it kind of point two to point three even ahead of what last year's class was. Yeah. And it seems like the GPAs have kind of been going up versus another class that had a big spike in it, so.
She's made a discussion at home about that, my oldest daughter really stood up for her class. It was really interesting.
It was interesting, because for whatever reason, it's published in the newspaper, so you get to see it. And over the last few years, I've just been known, I'm like, oh, and just kind of like curious to see what it is. And I'm like, just knowing what this year's kind of close was, I'm like, wow, this is like so far above. So that's kind of like where my whole thing started.
And even to that point, so the discussion from the students on this change isn't just centered to people not in the top ten percent. People at the top who are valedictorian or salutatorian or in that group, they're also advocating for a better way to do it, you know, look at it. So it's spread across the spectrum, not just people that aren't in the top ten percent.
Right. The whole thing that really appeals to me is, you're not competing against someone else, you're making yourself better. And if you achieve those goals, you've earned it. You're not, you know, and you can support everybody else with it. It's not like, I want you to get a B so I can be valedictorian and you're salutatorian, you know? It's, it takes that part away, which I think is what you want in the community.
So are we looking to have this done then before the beginning of next school year for the valedictorian class? Or do you think it's going to be a longer discussion than that?
I don't think so. I think it depends upon what the data, what the survey is saying. And it's, I think it is agreeing that, you know, there's always that place for the GPA. I think there's that, how we recognize a graduation. And if we choose to recognize rank as compared to a status quo of that, I think that's really what it is. I mean, I think we're waiting to see that the date, we don't want to rush anything, but at the same time, we're not gonna do it, if the school year started, we're gonna wait till a whole other school year. You can't change in the middle of a school year. So it's either have it ready or not. And so I feel like, if we feel like there's some overwhelming evidence and research and support, you know, we'll bring it back on June twenty-fourth, we'll bring it July. If we feel like there's a lot of support, let's see what that proposal looks like. And we want to make sure that we're vetting it through and not rushing it through, but we also realize that we have a short window in which we're gonna change that. Yeah. I think the other point that, you know, this class still was able to audit classes at some point in their high school career. That has not been the case for the last two. So just looking forward, the fact that students couldn't audit, their GPAs can never get as high as that because there's been some things that have been taken away like that auditing. And that's, those are the rules of the game. So historically, to be able to move that forward, you know, you've gotta be able to put that into context, right? National Honor Society is another thing. If the GPA has always been the same and regardless, if the rules have changed in which you can get weighted or unweighted, understand that that bar hasn't changed. So you have to, you know, you have to take those things into consideration. If you ever went to an eight-period day or a six-period day, like, all of those variables play into that one mathematical formula. So I think we just have to be much more aware of, when we change the rules of the game, students get really good at playing those rules. And we have to decide what game is it that we want them to play? The game of that or the game of learning at the end of the day? Because if they're sacrificing learning, and I'll tell you, it was sobering at that senior meet, like, I wish everybody could have sat there and listened to your top twenty-five students talked about the intricacies of the games that they played in high school to get what they have. It was, it's sobering, it really is.
Does it talk about the valediction?
Yep, GPA. I will share one, I will, without going into it, I will share one comment from a girl because a teacher said, wait, so what AP classes wouldn't have you taken in high school if they weren't weighted? AP Econ, AP Set, she listed all of them except for one. And the teacher's like, no, you would have, nope, I wouldn't have. If they weren't weighted, I would not have taken them. The teacher's still in the hallway, he's like, I can't believe she said that.
And they said, you need to know what the valediction thought was with the valediction vision, or was it just for the advice? Or you don't know?
Yeah, I mean, she just said, her point was, I would have rather taken regular Econ. I don't like Econ. I would have taken regular Econ then, but I knew that if I got a C in AP Econ, it would be like getting a B in regular Econ, so why wouldn't I?
It's the same game as being played in college. Do you recall that one when we had those?
Yeah, I do remember at the alumni, the focus group, right.
A girl came with her mom.
Yep.
And she said, it is so competitive at the college level that she really wanted to take a certain course, but she knew that that course wouldn't do her no good to get into whatever she wanted to get into.
And the professor, at that point, is because they could write a recommend, I mean, listen, we're not getting rid of game playing in the whole world without a doubt, but she did, her mom, she came with her mom that night and she did. She needed a certain class, by certain professor to write her a recommendation to get into the master's program because she, she was getting into a master's program, I think at Madison or wherever. But, I mean, there's all those pieces of it, but it's just, it's interesting, you know? And not every student, but it was overwhelming listening to them. And then there were some other kids like, never got into game playing, don't care, doesn't matter. How was it gonna be forced by that? So it was just a wide range. It was just fascinating to listen to students and have their voice be heard in terms of, and talk with each other out of like, why would you do that or how come that? It was, I love that.
So would we want to use that week for like exit interviews?
I really think.
Maybe in a mass group? Or to collect personal emails? I know, you know, we want to.
We did that this year for the very first time. The senior class was the first time the counseling department said, hey, let's be proactive about this, let's collect their personal email. So we did that for the first time this year. In addition to keeping their Wittenal email for at least a year on out, so we don't lose that connection with them. Yep. That exit interview, I think there's so much to be said, especially from our seniors who are willing to, at that point, they're willing to share.
In that weak window.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
And do we have a strong, or do we have an alumni that meets, you know, five, ten years that we could get information there?
We haven't, and you know, a lot of us who, you know, used to have that whole traditional way of doing class reunions now. It's all through social media, and so they organize it by themselves. They used to use your school district a lot as a conduit to do that, but social media sort of is the conduit way of organizing those reunions. We get contacted, Dave and Charlie do about, you know, it's the twenty-year class reunion, come and do a quick tour. This year, we had the reunion out on the football field. They came to a football game as part of their reunion weekend or whatever, but not collectively. We haven't aggressively solicited that yet either, but we want to make sure that there's a purpose other than just, hey, give us your email or contact information. We know we're never be together.
Okay, any other questions? So this will potentially come again on the twenty-fourth?
I think we just want to keep giving updates to see where we are with the, and if we have any data solidified by then, we'll make sure that we get it out there so you can take a look at what some of the survey results are.
Okay, great. Thank you. On to eight, I'm sure, future consideration. Okay, on to nine, announcements.
Well, go ahead, Jeff. Well, I thought the graduation ceremony was very good, very nice. Steve did our board very good. I had a student tell me that they liked Dr. Olson's speech, which I thought was amazing that they were listening. Just, I not, yeah, I just, yeah, I think they're just, you know, blown off. But, yeah, I would hope in the future that we would get a microphone to the speaker, to the singers. And maybe not start the band so early, because I, you know, at the very end there, when you have.
We're not supposed to play that loud either.
Well, you know, it would have been, it would have been awesome, I think, if they, right, if they would gradually, because you, right, right, because you, I thought you did an excellent job because you're, you know, you realize, I gotta speak up here. And if it would have been gradual, I think it would have been really cool, but it was bang, bang, right away.
Yeah, so I attended this past weekend, it was a five K for Ethan's run against the U-R, which is brought to light because my friend and one of our alumni here passed away from an accidental heroin overdose. But it is rolling, it's the second year. Last year they rose to about forty thousand, this year they were up close to eighty thousand. And we had, I think, eight hundred and almost regents for the race. So hopefully next year I can try to throw more advertising out there. Because we did have a lot of alumni running, but it'd be nice to see a lot of our students as well participate. Because it's, it was a track and field and cross-country activity. And I saw a lot of students from other schools doing it, not as many from here. So hopefully we can get some more participation and just bring awareness to it because there's a giant quilt of people that passed away and they add squares to it and don't notice it. The number of people that are under the age of thirty or twenty-five is astonishing and just it's tragic.
Music boosters are having a car wash on January, sorry, January, July, June twenty-second, Saturday, June twenty-second at Ken Michaels Furniture on Highway one hundred. That's gonna be like, I think, from ten to two.
Don't forget Wednesday is the break of brick at six o'clock. And if you haven't responded as a board member for a tour after that, because it's the last time before we sort of really tighten up the building at H C, this is gonna be really hard for anybody sort of to get in or closing it down shortly after that. Retirement recognition stamp luncheon on Wednesday to recognize those who are retiring and who have fifteen or twenty-five years of service. So I'll make sure that we share a program with you, they each have a little bio in that program. I'll get that out to you. Summer school and Park and Rec starts next Monday. So we'll have two hundred little ones in the high school in addition to all of the construction and everything running out from Hills Corners Park and Rec, and our summer school's across the street at the middle school. In addition to the Greenfield Y program also over there, yes. So we'll have lots of busyness happening in addition to all the construction going full force next Monday, so.
Okay, on to meeting debrief, anyone have anything? Okay, great. So then I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Non-motion carries, have a great evening.